All right, it is 10:37 and we are here to resume with our infrastructure replacement, financial analysis, and long-term strategy presentation. We have New Gen and Mr. David Erb.
Well, we don't have New Gen. We have a New Gen as the author and we worked collaboratively to pull this together. Really excited to share this information with you. I think you know over the past several years, there's been an effort on budget part to fully fund or work towards increasing funding for capital. We know the importance of funding capital at the appropriate level, and I think we've made a great number of strides to get there. But this is the first comprehensive look that we've taken at our infrastructure. Just basically, I'll cover this later, but we took a data dump of all of our fixed assets that are listed for the city, assigned dates that they were put into service, the cost, the estimated useful life, and the replacement cost to come up with some of these information that you're going to be seeing. So, a lot of work went into it. We're probably still maybe two-thirds of the way through. I think we have a great starting point with this information. We're going to do some refining. That's going to continue after this meeting, but I think it's going to be good information that you'll be able to take with you as we move into the budget process and there's going to be a need for additional funding for some of these capital items. I'll just make a couple of points before we move forward. I think the city council can feel pretty good about where we're at with the funding levels. You'll see that we've got lower bounds and upper bounds for desired funding, and we're at the lower bounds, which that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing, actually. And we're contributing in excess of $50 million a year towards capital, which is quite remarkable. So, with this presentation, what we're hoping to do, it's a two-pronged approach. We've got, excuse me, recognize the need for additional funding, but then also recognizing a need for process improvement and making ourselves more efficiency, more efficient over the long run. We don't just want to keep throwing money at infrastructure. We want to be able to do infrastructure better. And I think Public Services has done a number of things, along with the other departments, to develop programs to help spend those monies wisely. So, I'll be touching on all of that as we move forward. Just a couple of points on the funding project, the infrastructure funding project, and what we did as set up as goals for moving forward with this. We wanted to determine the future funding needs. So, what should we really be putting aside on a regular basis? And we're going to exclude major facilities like the public safety complex or for City Hall, because those we typically address with a bond issue. What we want to do is we want to address those items that are funded on a regular basis, either through the bond election, through regular issuances of bonds, or with cap, cash funding. I think we're striving for a good amount of cash to support so that we're not over-leveraging ourselves, but that's one of the first things. Go ahead, Gina.
I was just going to say, when you say we're going to exclude major facilities like our City Hall and stuff, we aren't excluding them in terms of roof replacements and, you know, HVACs and things like that. We are not saying in 20 years, we're going to move out of City Hall and build a new City Hall. So, we're not amortizing, I guess, the cost of a new City Hall. We're anticipating that we're going to stay in that City Hall. We're going to maintain it every year in the way it needs to be maintained so we don't have to wholesale tear it down and start over.
Correct. Thanks for that clarification. What we did is we applied useful lives to all these assets, including the buildings, and technically, a building would have an effective useful life. But with the maintenance programs that we have in place, we're working towards extending that useful life. So, rather than try to set money aside on a regular basis to support that replacement when that effective useful life is up, we're putting money aside to maintain and continue that moving forward. So, thank you for that. The second goal for the project was to identify gaps in the annual funding. So, we know what we're contributing. We know what we have been and what we've ramped up our capital funding on an annual basis to. So, now we've determined what we need, what we're funding, and then we've identified those gaps. We want to develop a strategy to close those gaps. We've got two ways. We're going to smartly fund the capital, and then we would also look for efficiencies to bring those costs down over time. And then, that's to that last point, identify methods to gain long-term cost efficiencies. So, how do we go about this project? Like I mentioned before, we did a comprehensive review of all assets. We did a data dump from our accounting system of every fixed asset that we track, and we've got them broken down in all the different categories from water and wastewater, infrastructure, which includes streets and sidewalks, machinery and equipment, stormwater, water and sewer. So, we've broken those individually, and you'll see in the slides coming up how we've broken those out as far as determining funding levels and gaps. Initially, we used the accounting service lives employed for shorter-lived assets. So, basically, what we did is, for depreciation purposes, for our accounting system, a useful life of an asset is X, and we depreciate that cost over a period of time. But in discussions with Claire and Gina, we've talked about the actual useful life of that is much different sometimes than the accounting life. So, we've moved away from that as we've kind of refined this process so that we have actual or close-to-actual useful lives assigned to these. And where this comes in is, when we start determining what that funding need is in the future, if we're saying that we're going to need to replace a building after 30 years, well, if we're going to use it for 50 years, if we're having to fund it in 30 years, that's going to bring a different number than if we have to fund it over a 50-year period. So, that's just kind of the refining that we've done with this. And again, to that point, we've made some adjustments to the longer-lived assets. Water and sewer typically would have useful lives of anywhere between 45 and 60 years. We want to make sure that we're using the appropriate useful life when we determine funding in the long term. So, once we determined what assets we were going to categorize, when they were put into service, how long they were going to last, then we needed to determine what the escalated or replacement cost is going to be for those items. So, the consultant used a number of different resources to determine what those inflation costs are. So, they've got a couple of these indexes, the Handy-Wittman, the INR, Construction Cost Index. Both of those will project inflation cost for utility and for construction costs, and then just long-term inflation and how those impact replacement costs moving forward. We also used averages for replacements. So, some of those shorter-lived assets like machinery and equipment or vehicles, they have a shorter useful life and they're going to be replaced more often versus those that have 20 or 30 years, which would be the longer-lived assets, streets, for example. I just want to remind the council of the replacement plans that we have in place. So, we've addressed these one-offs. So, through technology or maintenance and replacement, individually, we're addressing these capital replacement needs. The intent of this study is to bring them all together under one umbrella so that we already know that we're putting money towards these various areas, but how does that play into the overall picture of capital replacement for the city? These plans are beneficial and assist in the budget process. They're reprioritized every year based on needs, and they allow us then to look out five years or more, those funding needs. So, then it helps budgeting for those So, the first step we did is we took a look back after pulling together all the assets, is how much we were putting together or how much we were putting towards capital funding every year. And it was quite astonishing when we started looking at it. We knew that we were making concerted efforts to put more money towards capital funding every year, but when you take a look at this, it's quite remarkable. So, we just have the council thank for the trust to put money towards the replacement of these and the ability to do things like issue bonds to support the project. So, over the last four years, on average, we've contributed about $23 million in cash on an annual basis towards these various capital replacement programs. In fiscal year 2023, we contributed a little over $34 million. A lot of that is due to the additional monies that are going towards the public safety complex. But we've noticed over the last several years that we've increased that capital funding with cash over time, and that'll be reflected in the amount moving forward. Historically, we've issued bonds averaging about $16.8 million a year. This is going back to the beginning of the 2015 bond election. A portion of that is broken out to infrastructure and parks. There was also an amount that was for Thrive that we've not included in this, but generally, we're able to contribute on the geo side for infrastructure in parks, about $16.8 million. On the water and sewer side, over the last several years, we've issued about $10 million a year to go towards water and sewer improvements. So, on an annual basis, I had mentioned this earlier, we're contributing about a little over $50.5 million a year to go towards capital replacement, maintenance, and ongoing cost for capital. So, moving forward, determining the current funding level moving forward, and then determining the gap from there. We've anticipated that we're going to be contributing about $25.3 million in cash towards the various capital programs. In addition, we're going to have that $16.8 million in geo bonds, and we've actually ramped up the amount that we're able to support via water and sewer from the $10 million to $14 million. So, those are annual issues they would do, that would take those monies and put towards those projects. So, the total annual cost of replacement funding moving forward, $56.3 million. We asked Chris Eckrout, who helped us with this, how he thought we were doing compared to other communities. And basically, his comment was, far and away, we're well ahead of many other communities for funding for capital. A lot of what he's seeing is communities that are being reactive to capital needs or becoming a little bit proactive, but we've moved through this progression of trying to be a little more predictive of where we want to use our monies and get the most bang for our buck with that. So, I think that was kudos from someone that does this as a living, sees what other communities are doing, and sees that we're doing something real positive here. So, you're going to see a number of these charts moving forward, and let me just walk you through and explain what the different components are. So, this is one way that we use to identify the gaps in our funding. And there's a number of different lines that you'll see. The first set of information on the upper left talks about the current funding level, $56.3 million. The lower bound average, 57.2. That's what they're saying. We would need, over a short period of time on average, to support the capital program. And you can see that we're right where we need to be. The upper bound average is, takes a longer look in time for the amount of capital that's needed and saying that you need to support the capital program with this amount of money. You can see where we're falling short from that. But as far as the lower bound, the shorter period of times, we're meeting our needs for capital. Regarding the chart on the bottom, you've got the solid blue line, which is the current funding level. There is the green line, which we're right on top of, which is the lower average or what we need on average over the next period of years to support capital program. The yellow line is the upper average. That is the amount that, over a longer period of time on average, what we're going to need to support the capital program.
Dave, can you clarify what is short-term versus longer-term in years?
Certainly. So, this is a summary table that brings shorter and longer-lived assets together. So, there's not a specific time period, but typically, for the shorter-lived assets, we would use a timeframe of maybe three years, five years, seven years. So, they're going to be replaced more often. So, they've used a shorter time period to measure the amount that's needed for replacement. For something like infrastructure, water and sewer, those go out 20, 30, 50 years. Those lower-bound averages and upper-bound averages capture a period in time that we would need to require funding. So, obviously, if you go out for 20 years, it's going to capture more capital needs and more projects that maybe have significant amounts, and that's what is represented in those spikes. So, a significant project came online at that point. So, for example, early on, it might be, that's when we brought online the water treatment plant. So, obviously, a big expense related to that. So, that's coming up for replacement in a future period. Is that good? Okay. So, again, this is a cumulative chart, taking all the short-lived and long-lived assets, and that's why, while there's no timeframe identified here, that's the idea, to kind of meld those together. So, the first one we're going to look at is infrastructure and streets and sidewalks. Based on the funds that are we're putting towards infrastructure, the current funding level is $24.9 million. A portion of that is going to be those bonds that we had talked about, and a portion is going to be cash on an ongoing basis. That lower-bound average is $23.6 million. So, you can see that we're just slightly above what we need to fund those street programs over a 10-year period. And you can see where now we've identified that lower-bound average is a 10-year average. So, the projects that are coming due in the next 10 years, what we need on an average to fund those. So, we're right where we need to be to fund that. But if we look longer term for the 20-year average, you can see some of the spikes that are occurring in the later years. That's where we'll require more funds. So, that's going to increase the amount that we need to put aside on average each year. And I will just make note that there's two colors in the fill at the bottom of the chart. The darker color is the actual cost of the asset that, when it was put into service, and the lighter color is the escalated cost when it comes time to replace. So, you can see in what year. 2035, we've got significant projects that came online 20 and 30 years prior that are coming due at that point. Specifically, during the period of 2002 and 2006, there was a significant amount of street projects that came online from different sources, and in particular, one year, about $39 million in streets came on at that time. And it could have been the accumulation of a number of projects that are wrapping up that had been in the works for a number of years. So, that's what some of those spikes represent. Later on, we've got some spikes that relate to the railroad park. We had done a lot of work to develop the park, implement infrastructure for that. And then, later down, we've got some spikes that relate to neighborhood improvements that went into place. So, again, for, as it relates to infrastructure, streets and sidewalks, our current funding level is 24.9. We're meeting that lower-bound average, what we need to fund those projects over a shorter period of time. But on the upper-bound average, we're looking to need about $33.5 million annually towards infrastructure to meet those needs. And you can see, based on our current funding level, we have that gap of about $9 million. So, any questions so far on what I've talked about here?
That's $9 million a year?
A year.
I just might also add, this may be obvious, but when we're talking about current funding, and he's talking about that's an average that we spend every year, when you see those spikes in expenditures, it's not like we're not meeting those needs. We will issue more debt in those spike years and then not as much in other years. So, our average line that goes across there, current funding, does go up and down every year, just for purposes of looking at a 10-year or a 20-year average. It's an average amount that goes across the chart.
Also, one clarification, we're talking about money that we're obligating, right? Not necessarily spending?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And the whole idea is to smooth these costs over long periods of time. Those spikes are there, but we're going to do some more analysis on specifically what's driving those spikes, and if it's something that we can smooth out over time, we will do that. And obviously, it'll make budgeting a little bit easier.
Well, my question is also having to do with, you know, if we fund a project, but something comes, we can't get the right-of-way. So, the project just delays. The money was still obligated, right, but the project hasn't happened. So, I'm talking more of a, you know, are we staying on schedule with the replacements, which is a related, but I guess a somewhat different question?
So, those projects that we're able to move forward with, we do, we've also do this on a regular basis, where if we've got some funds for a particular infrastructure project that's being held up because of right-of-way acquisition, for example, we would possibly then shift those funds to another infrastructure project to keep those projects moving forward.
Right. So, I think that's the strategy with regard to the, how we move the financing. Once it goes to a capital project, we can kind of shift as needed between those capital projects, knowing that we need to achieve all of them. But I think we're going to be bringing, and probably in the next three months, CIP presentation to council to tell you where we are on all of our capital projects. We do that every year. Last year, we did at Retreat. We'll do it in about three months. And I think there are some policies, standard operating procedures, that we're going to be putting in place with regard to how long we wait in right-of-way acquisition before we pull the trigger for eminent domain and things like that. So, that we'll go through that with you, because I think there are things that are getting held up. I know you know many of them that are getting held up. I think one of them might be in front of your house. But on those projects, and then we'll talk through how we're going to be leveraging third-party services to assist us in those regards.
So, I guess part of my question, as it relates to cost, is if we have, you know, kind of some projects that are backing up for one reason or another, and then, you know, of course, they're all going to happen at the same, everybody's going to free up, and they're all going to need to happen at the same time. Do we have staff to handle that workload? Do we need to hire more? Is that cost factored in here, or is this just the cost of the infrastructure itself?
This is strictly infrastructure costs.
Okay.
The operational side, I think that gets managed, you know, through the manager's office.
But to your point, I think we're going to, and actually, that's one of Jim's first projects, is to sit down with our engineering and public services department and really kind of get a Gantt chart of where we are on all of our projects. One that, like you said, when you've got engineers that have maybe six projects on their plate, but are they all hitting at the same time in construction now because we've had delays? We need to figure out from a work perspective, how to manage that, and then staffing levels as well, and then, again, third-party services to be able to assist if we need that, to kind of do that, be that relief valve for us.
Okay.
But you're absolutely right. We're, that is something that we're very mindful of right now, is we're, council's giving us a lot of money to put towards infrastructure, and so we need to be able to deliver in a timely fashion as well, because there's more money, more projects that we can now get to. But what does that mean from a staffing level?
Right. And I, so, and the reason I ask is that I know it's almost impossible to predict what that extra cost would be, but, you know, is there a little wiggle room? We need to build into this now to give us some, you know, some ability to have some of those funds available, knowing that there could be additional costs if, you know, things happen to where they all stack up, and then now our costs are higher.
Yeah. So, the other thing that Dave Solomon has done is he has put in, I would say padding, it's not really padding, but he's added additional dollars into some of his Blue Ribbon projects because of needing to rely more on third-party services. So, being able to have that flexibility later. So, we're planning for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, this shows the picture of where we're at with infrastructure. Similarly, with our water system, again, we broke our major systems out, water, sewer, infrastructure, and then other. So, with the water system, current funding level, about $9.9 million. The lower-bound average is at $8.3 million. The upper-bound average is 12. So, again, you can see a tighter band, but you can see the spikes, and you can see that first spike is related to the water treatment plant. And now, again, we're not going to remove an existing water plant and replace it with new. And these are some of the things that we are going to smooth out, but there are monies that we have, the wastewater treatment master plan and the water master plan, that we're following, so that we're going to put monies towards those projects at that time. But on average, considering all the water assets, the current funding is a little bit above the lower-bound average, but it falls a little bit below the upper-bound average. And a lot of the spikes that you see with the water and the sewer, there's a lot of system improvements. So, there's not pointed to one direct or specific project. So, it may be made up of a number of different things, waterline replacements and major projects that just all come online at the same time. Wastewater system, again, current funding, $9.9 million. Basically, how we determine that is, on an average, we're going to split the amount of money that's available for utility equally between water and wastewater. Now, on an annual basis, that doesn't necessarily hold true, for an example, is we're concentrating on the wastewater treatment plant. So, we're directing more funds towards wastewater treatment and wastewater than we are to water. But when that project is completed, then that's going to flip, and we're going to start focusing on our water treatment plant. So, on average, these are the amounts that are needed, but in actuality, as Gina had mentioned, we're going to meet the need where that's at. So, we're a little bit closer with the upper-bound average as far as current funding is for wastewater versus water. But again, most of our efforts right now are directed to wastewater. This is our other spending category. It includes facilities, technology, machinery and equipment, and other improvements. And this is, relates back to those replacement plans that I showed earlier. This is basically an accumulation of all those different projects. And then, in addition, there are some different additional assets that we identified coming from the data dump that are not included in that, in those programs. And so, that's why you're seeing maybe a little bit bigger of a gap here for funding. And some of those other improvements, we'll give you an example, is a radio system that we spent about $8 million on. We're not necessarily going to be doing a wholesale change of that and requiring another $8 million. There may be some annual replacement that needs that have, that are there, that we'll fund. So, that would bring that lower and upper-bound averages down. But this is the area that we're going to be spending most of our time moving forward with this project to identify those, and more information will be brought to council at that time.
Is this the category that, like, traffic signals would be in?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything from defibrillators to traffic signals to radio systems, it's the biggest bucket that we have. And because the other areas, infrastructure, water, and sewer, they were easy to identify and assign costs to and funding, this is a little bit more inclusive. So, this is going to take a little bit to put that final plan together.
To make sure I'm looking at this correctly, this is showing that we have, maybe concerned is a strong word, but we're short here compared to everywhere else. Is that right?
Right. We're shorter here than we are in some of the other areas. But Gina's point earlier, we are funding the things that we need. So, for vehicles, for instance, we have the vehicle replacement plan that we are funding those vehicles when they are needed. Some of the technology, annually, we have a technology program, that those things are getting funded. It's my opinion that the difference between the current funding and what's actually being funded are those outliers, those items that we haven't quite identified on a particular plan that we're going to get on a funding plan, and we'll be able to give you an idea of what that looks like when we get closer to the budget.
Thank you for that clarification.
And you can see with this chart versus the others, the difference between the cost of putting the asset into place and the replacement cost is a little bit narrower because we are replacing them more frequently. So, we're not going out 20 years and having that impact of inflation. So, we're replacing them more often. So, that's why that narrow band is there. One of the things that we excluded from this analysis, or we didn't exclude, we've segregated from the other areas, is stormwater, because we had just done that analysis last year. So, the plan that council put in place allows us to eventually get up to the funding level that's needed to support the capital projects on an annual basis over the long term. So, you can see the blue line identifies the current funding, and the dash red line identifies the needs on average. Again, we're going to be funding what we need on an annual basis, but over the long haul, we're going to have Uh, but over the long haul, we're going to have sufficient funds, uh, based on the capital projects that were identified last summer, uh, to su- to support the, the program. Again, we have about a hundred and ninety-four million dollars in projects, which includes some of the projects that were identified here. That are, have been identified in the blue ribbon plan that we'll be bringing to you that will likely cause, uh, a, bring a recommendation to make an adjustment to that, that plan. But, uh, we'll know more after we get through the blue ribbon program. So drivers for long-term strategy, these are some considerations for moving forward, how we go about funding. Obviously, the first thing we look at is the desired level of service, uh, to our constituents. And I think that is to exceed their expectations, right? Uh, have a high level of service. So, uh, this, how's this, what does this look like? Um, you had mentioned, you know, street conditions, you don't want, you know, potholes, uh, park access and safety. You want to have a safe, uh, place for folks to go, reliable water and sewers. Uh, someone had mentioned that earlier, you want to make sure you get the quality, uh, water quality standards are there. Uh, so the level of service and the amount of risk that we want to, uh, take on are going to drive the decisions for funding moving forward. Um, and this is just a visual of something I, I think I tried to explain earlier is what's our long-term strategy for funding these projects? That current funding level and that lower bound average, that's where we're at with the blue line. Uh, the upper round average has been identified through the different, um, categories. And there's the gap that's been identified. And what we want to do is we want to be able to increase the funding commitment over time and then, but then also gain some efficiencies. And what's really neat is, um, you know, we've, we've seen some of that progress with, uh, things like the, uh, PCI indexes. Uh, where over time, because they're doing them every two or three years, uh, we're seeing there's some overall improvement. Now, there's still some areas that I think, uh, that I, they would even say that have been identified as, uh, spending decisions. Do you, do you replace a panel or do you not and use those monies elsewhere to extend the life of another, uh, street? Uh, those are decisions that we'll have to make, uh, but it's going to require data, uh, to do that. Um, this is the continuum I mentioned earlier, uh, about how we go about funding. We've moved along the continuum from being reactive to being proactive to even becoming somewhat predictive on, uh, you know, where to place our monies for replacement. Uh, I think we want to fully move to the predictive, um, end of the continuum where we can anticipate needs, uh, before they're coming. And, uh, in that way, uh, make it the most cost-effective capital program that's there, that's possible. Um, this is just a visual of kind of the decision-making process that we would go through. And it would be continuous, uh, starting with defining the level of service, which I think has already been identified. Uh, collecting the asset information, which is what we've done already with the, uh, project, assigning risk. Where will we run into trouble if we don't put monies in certain areas versus elsewhere? Uh, developing that funding plan long-term, implementing and reevaluating the success of the program, and then going through the process again. And then just with every turn, just refining, uh, the capital program. With the idea then is you're gaining these long-term efficiencies and, uh, saving money over the long term. So, uh, before we open up to questions, uh, just summarize, uh, this is a comprehensive review of our capital assets. Something that had been done, uh, up to this point. I think we've got some great, uh, tools, uh, to, to use moving forward. We've identified the annual funding needs, we've determined, uh, you know, what that gap is. But I, I think just one other point is, um, we're meeting, uh, that lower bound average. We're putting significant monies towards the capital program every year, so that's a win, uh, for, for council and for the, um, the city. And our long-term strategy moving forward, smartly increasing the funding, moving from reactive, predictive, and, uh, enhancing the data collection, uh, to gain the efficiencies. So that, I'll open up any questions.
I have one other comment to make too. As, uh, we've talked before about, um, infrastructure and trying to figure out exactly how much we should be setting aside. One of the things that we keep doing every year is trying to get to that number and it's very much a process. You'll notice as we go, went through that, none of this had anything to do with our current condition of our assets. So we have PCI data, we have condition ratings on all of our assets. How does that affect the financial and the replacement schedules? And so our next iteration of this is really going to be trying to combine, uh, like right now, if the streets were all rated a twenty, this wouldn't look any different. The streets are rated, you know, a seventy on average right now. So it's like, how does that come into play and how can we extend the life of our assets based on what we're currently putting aside? How can we keep those PCI ratings above a sixty so that we don't have to do wholesale replacements? We can start doing proactive replacements. And so that's something that not a lot of cities are at that point yet. There's not a lot of research on how to integrate that data and really how far can we extend the life of our assets. But that is definitely something we are going to be digging into this next year. So when Dave was talking about that enhanced data collection, it's really trying to say, every year when public works goes in and actually improves the street right now and it increases it from a sixty to a seventy, gets rid of those potholes. We need to put that into our system immediately to upgrade those PCIs to then be able to have a better trend that says, over the life of the last five years, we've been able to increase this asset and this rating and keep it steady, you know? And so trying to move into those things are going to cost a little bit of, uh, money in terms of operating costs with the data analysis we've got to get to as well as the, some of the software that we need to be able to do that. And so you're going to see some of that probably in the budget coming up, some of those requests that you might see, um, for more data analysis and analytics and ma- making sure public works can get their data in in a timely manner, how that integrates with our software we currently have. And so, um, it's, it's an interesting process. If y'all have come across anything that somebody's doing right now in that area, we're always looking right now to see. We've asked NuJin to kind of, you know, look at everybody, what they're doing, how they're doing it, how they're integrating that. And how far can we really extend that life? So that'll be the next iteration of this infrastructure update.
Well, I appreciate that clarification because I actually had a question about that. Um, because I assume that this is mostly based on the age of the infrastructure itself. Correct, um, so not the condition. So I, I appreciate that clarification. I really appreciate just this exercise. And, um, honestly, this is way more extensive than what I was expecting. So I am super happy. You had me at infrastructure and then you said efficiency and I just, I, I, I was just hanging on every word. I love it. There was a question, another question I had and I forgot what my question was. I think it was related to, um, that, that we had the age, oh, yes. So when the, the charts that you put together are, are regarding the age of the infrastructure that needs to be replaced. But I'm assuming that the stuff that has already been obligated but not, uh, replaced yet is not included in that number. Is that?
Correct. So the funding for the vehicle replacement, for instance, we have a fully funded plan there. So that when the time comes to replace those vehicles, we have the monies there. So the money's already been budgeted as part of the lease payment and it, it's set aside for when that time comes. And that's included in, uh, what you're seeing up there.
Oh, it is included.
Well, as far as like, um, the amount that we're contributing toward, um, the other category.
Well, okay, like for, I'll, I'll give you an example. So if we have a street project that has already been funded, so we don't need to increase funding to pay for it. We, it's already funded, but it hasn't happened yet. Is that included in that chart or not?
If it's already been funded, it's included in the estimate that we have for the bond. So for instance, the money be s- might be setting aside, uh, in, in the bucket, waiting for that project to be done. The, we're just accounting for the average money that's available every year towards that. So we're going to continue to issue bonds every year to generate the money, excuse me, to support those. So, um, if that street's listed in the infrastructure, for instance, and it's going to be replaced at X period of time, that's taking that into account.
Okay.
I just want to say I love it. Uh, a- anything that can, can bring efficiencies to looking at, specifically, I, I'm thinking of, of streets and roads, but vehicles and everything else, you know? I know they have like, uh, you know, where you, where you're looking at maintenance so you can look ahead. So this is kind of similar but different. I think we're on, kind of on the cutting edge because when we're looking at, at our streets and, and our public works, we can kind of be more predictive and proactive. And as we, as you get the modeling working together where the information can be input and changes everything, it can kind of refocus us of, okay, we got this done. Now we can, we can kind of easily move to another area that may be more pressing. So I, I like it makes a nimble government, uh, I think it sounds fantastic. Great job.
So I, I like your graph here, long-term strategies. And I, I'm always saying the word proactive and I've got another word I can use, predictive. So, uh, but, so I, I assume when all these new projects come online at that, or when there's a new build coming on and we look at the infrastructure when we do that? And those may, are those brought to higher priority when that happens?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
So if you got, so we got a new project online, such as, um, all of these new projects we have downtown or other developments? Do we look at those, the infrastructure for, along with those projects?
Right, so we're going to include that in addition to the asset listing. So what's needed moving forward, kind of like the stormwater project, right? We know what those projects are, so we know what, we determine what that funding need is. So if we have a new project that's coming online, then that's just going to be added to the, the annual funding.
I, I guess I'm more of, if a building is coming on, a new building is coming online, is, do we kind of look at the infrastructure near that location? And that, does that kind of move to the top of the list, kind of a thing like that way?
You know, like for example, like we're doing our public safety building. Um, and so, uh, the civic circle valley, uh, uh, project is being escalated to this, to happen at the exact same time. Now, if it's a private building that's being built, um, that developer, if it's infrastructure that's affecting, uh, they're, they're basically putting a draw on the system. Then they have to bring it up to code, they have to make, um, upgrades to it. Now, of course, there's, and you'll see this with our old town infrastructure analysis. Um, as those projects get built on, it can affect the entire system, right? In, in, in your old town. And so those things may end up being, uh, have to be borne by the city. Um, and so those also, you're constantly looking at, okay, this is taxing the city this way, it's taxing the sanitary sewer, water system. And so then the city is going to have, if it's the whole, it's, it's the whole system and not necessarily that one project that's affecting it, that may trickle to, uh, to expedite certain projects over others.
And we do that with, um, water-related projects. If there's a street going through, we're going to elevate that priority if the street needs to be done. And then they'll move the, uh, water or sewer, uh, work that's done, uh, move that up as well. And we're seeing a lot of that with also how it's going to be funded. Uh, you know, there's going to be higher priority projects if they're receiving outside funding versus, uh, funding this just from the city.
So Will's question actually, um, brought, brought another question to my mind. So let's say we have, um, a street that does not exist right now, but it's on our thoroughfare plan. Is that factored into these numbers?
It is not.
Okay.
It would have to be added at the time it's built, then we would start planning for the future replacement of a new street.
Okay, so then this is really a, this is a living, breathing thing, so it's going to be constantly updated. So then the gaps that exist right now may narrow and they may widen over time.
Exactly, we'll have to keep up with whatever growth that we have in new streets and, and the cost of maintaining the existing.
Well, I look forward to having this discussion over and over again.
Yeah, so based on the useful life of the asset, if it gets added in this year, you'll see it appear in the chart thirty years down the road. And then that's going to play into the average need, uh, for funding. So, um, when we put it in use, that's when it'll start impacting that.
Okay.
Great stuff. Love the visual of seeing all of the different capital expenditures in one, one space. We, we tend to see them financially as separate things, you know, water, wastewater sits in its own. And, um, being able to see that all as a holistic view is, is great. I feel, I feel vindicated in moving some of these dollars that we've moved over the years to, uh, you know, get more pay-as-you-go. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm always terrified that it's all going to fall apart and we, you know, we'll, so this is, this is great data. Thank you so much.
Thank you.